Okay, good evening. Eastline Board of Selectmen, regular meeting of September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We're here in the... Oh, it's a public hearing. Do we have an agenda for the public? I'm sorry. I back up, let me see that. Okay, so, let's start over. It's the Town of Eastline Board of Selectmen, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given of a public hearing to be held by the Eastline Board of Selectmen at seven P. M. on September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five, at the Eastline Town Hall, one oh eight Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic, Connecticut, to continue the discussion of the following: amendments to the Town of Eastline, section one five zero point zero one five, fees for building demolition permits, subsection A of the Town of Eastline Building Ordinances. Copies of the full text of the proposed ordinances are en filed for public inspection at the Office of the Eastline Town Clerk, one oh eight Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic, Connecticut, and at http slash slash www.e l t o w n h a l dot com, to which reference may be had. Interested parties and persons are invited to attend to be heard, and this is dated at Eastline, Connecticut. And the notice was third day of September two thousand and twenty-five, Eastline Board of Selectmen. So, we're here tonight to hear commentary. This was really perfunctory, in a sense. We had passed the rate changes, but when they were printed out, there was some translation and some of the line items got switched. So, we got that corrected, and we dealt with that at the last meeting. But leave that as a may. If there's anyone that would like to address the new fees, we're here to listen. Anyone that would like to address the Board of Selectmen? Going once, going twice, hearing none? Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
We close the public hearing.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I'm sorry.
Of September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I'll second, all right. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone abstaining? All right, I'm checking. Okay, the public hearing will be closed. So now, we jump the gun a little bit forward. So, good evening, it's the Eastline Board of Selectmen, regular meeting of September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five, from the Eastline Town Hall Upper Meeting Room. We are commencing this immediately following the public hearing that just concluded. If we could rise and...
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see, do we have any additional agenda or consent calendar items? I'm not aware of any. Nope. Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to delegations. Is there anyone that would like to address the Board of Selectmen this evening? Yes, please, just, please identify yourself for the record, name and address.
Hi, Eric Bowman, Eastline Board of Ed Chair, Fifteen Harvest Glen. I am losing my voice, apologies, I'll do the best I can. The Board of Ed had sent the Board of Selectmen a letter about a couple weeks ago about the Student Resource Officer. So, to give a just brief history, Officer Don Hull, now our Director of Security, Don Hull, was the SRO for nine years. Uniformed, Eastline Police Officer, who would come to us, be at our schools and be representative at our schools. About a month and a half ago, our Director of Security in our schools retired, and we hired Don Hull to be our Director of Security for schools. That opened a position that there is no SRO or Student Resource Officer or Uniformed Police Officer at our schools at this time. And a few weeks before school, I started contacting and reaching out, and we've been reaching out because I think it's a critical part of our security plan to have a uniformed officer at our schools. So, we wanted to come here to kind of let you know and articulate the importance of it, and have a request. So, our request is, can we immediately have an SRO, even if it's interim, it could change on a daily basis, but have a uniformed officer at our schools, starting tomorrow, Friday, the latest. I think that's an important part of our school safety plan. The second request is, will take a little more time, but really, our need is for two SROs. And the second, if you look at our surrounding towns, they all have more than one, Waterford Old Lime, or Lime Old Lime and others. As you look at our school complex and our campuses, it would really be beneficial for us to have two uniformed police officers who could be at the different locations at different times. So, those are our two primary requests, and hope that the Board of Selectmen can help and work. I know we have a new police commissioner who's just settling in, so it's a little challenging, but if we can at least have somebody in the immediate need, and then by early October, mid-October, talk about having a second, that would be great. We do have Don Hull here, because I think it would be helpful for you to, him to articulate what does the SRO do and the importance to our town and to our schools for doing that. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Don, who's gonna give a little update. So, thank you.
Thank you. How we doing? Don Hull, forty-three, Cardinal Road, former Officer Don. I am now the Director of Security for the Eastline Schools. I might be slightly biased, but yeah, I can't tell you how important I think that role is in every school, not just our schools. I know it took a lot of time to build the trust of not only the students, but their parents, the staff, building that relationship. The nine years in the school, probably the first two years, it was a long, arduous process, but we really got there. I know, because I've seen the results. I think the community has seen the results, and our department has seen the results. But all the interactions that I hear about from the kids or from the officers are phenomenal. I, again, slightly biased, but when I would go to our regional SRO meetings and talk to other officers that do the same job in their communities and their towns, and we would interact about what was going on in our schools, I was proud to take my turn. It's incredible. That said, I think that's a fragile thing. I don't know how long we can put that off, where we lose that connection with the kids and their families. The priority for me is huge, while I also understand the staffing issues with the Police Department and, you know, a new Chief of Police and everything that must be on its plate right now. These kind of demands, I know, would put a lot of stress on the department, and if there's any way at all, we could possibly find some kind of, you know, middle ground temporarily. But I will say now, no longer an employee of the department, I was run ragged. One officer, five schools, it was a lot. It was beyond a full-time job. It took a great deal of my personal time, weekend time, it was a lot for one person to handle. A fair comparison is Waterford. They have three SROs in their schools, and they have less numbers for student body. So, in Waterford, our rival would always let me know they had three and we had one. So, I took that personal, so if you want to go with four, that would be great. But really, thank you for your time, and please consider this seriously. We really, it's a huge importance, and obviously, it's very close to my heart, but thank you for the time.
Thank you for your comment, appreciate it. And if I could just add, Jeff Newton, Superintendent for the District, as well as resident, Fifty-three Arbor Crossing. I really want to emphasize that partnership. Let me commend the Police Commission and commend the Town for the hiring that you've done. I think we've brought on an excellent new chief, heard nothing but great things about him. We've reached out to him, he got right back to us. So, we're really looking forward to re-establishing, you know, a strong partnership with our Police Department. And that bridge is this position, and having two, or four, as Don mentioned. It's what's best for our kids. The connections that that SRO has with families makes such a difference, and it's so important to the work that we do, and that feeling of safety that kids have in going to a police officer, not just at school, but seeing an officer all the time, going up to an officer on the street, there's a level of comfort that is built with that. So, such an important position, and hence, that's why, you know, we've sent the letter. If anybody didn't, everybody get a copy of the letter, so you can, there, we had some details in there. If you did not have copies, but we are just imploring that we are able to reinstate that position and really further build that partnership with the new chief, which I'm really looking forward to. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Jamie Marshelburn, thirty-one, McElany Drive.
I'm gonna echo everything everyone has said before me, but I'm going to expand on Don's previous job capabilities. He also taught the Challenge Program in the middle schools, which is equivalent to the Dare Program, but much more effective. He built strong relationships with students, parents, community members. Students would call him on the weekends, "I'm having problems, can you please come out?" When he wasn't working, he would still take the time to talk, text, do everything, because he had built strong relationships with the students while being in school. They trusted him. He would cut things off at the pass that may have happened, because students would come to him and they trusted him. And it did take him a long time to build that relationship with the students so that they could trust him, but I feel that it is very important that we get another, we can't clone or duplicate Don, but it would be nice if we could get another SRO who could build those lasting relationships with the students and parents, so that events that could happen don't, and that students have a trusted person that they can talk to that is not a parent or a teacher that they can rely on outside of school. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Board this evening? Please.
Evening, Paul Spikowski, Thirty-seven Mill Road. I am changing the subject totally here. I'm going back to the fall time when I was here last, discussing the tipping fees on mason dumps, going up to the landfill and being charged for leaves being dumped up there. And I explained, at that point, I explained it all to you all. I mean, it was just nothing but a hidden tax for people who could not really afford it, and you all agreed at that point, each and every one of yous, and it didn't go through the tipping fee, so we were allowed free passage to the landfill. Then, over the months, over the summertime, I'm hearing rumor that everything got rescinded, everything got put back on a table, and somebody presented some doom and gloom numbers that the town was gonna fall apart or something, that if they didn't start charging for the tipping fees for the mason dumps again. And you all, it was a rumor at that point, and you all turned around and went for it and put the fees back on. And I didn't, I waited till I come down to pay my taxes to confirm it down to the Town Hall, and lo and behold, I was stunned, believe me. I could not believe, at that point in the fall time, I trusted you all one hundred percent. I said, this is the place to go, these people listened, they listened to the taxpayers and their concerns, and they went along with me. And to find this out, and I felt like I was being stabbed in the back. I've lost my trust in you all completely, and it's a shame. I was born and raised in this town, I run my businesses in this town, I got a few places in this town, and fifty percent of my clientele are in this town. And it's a shame that this happened. You know, I've lost my trust in you, but I haven't lost my trust in God, and I'm sure that somehow, he's gonna turn this around and make it right. And I'm sorry this all had to happen, but I had to come down, speak my mind. Thank you kindly.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the Board this evening? All right, here's our, no other delegations. Approval of the minutes. Now, your motion for the public hearing of September third, two thousand and twenty-five.
Move to approve the public hearing minutes of September third, two thousand and twenty-five is submitted.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion or changes, modifications to the public hearing? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Thank you. Next, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September third, two thousand and twenty-five. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the regular meeting minutes of September third, two thousand and twenty-five is submitted.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of approving the minutes, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Motion carries. All right, next, we have the consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar for September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five in the amount of three thousand, three hundred, fifty-five dollars and sixteen cents.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Looks pretty, as usual, nothing extraordinary on it, so. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? None, motion carries. Next this evening, we have Alex Close here, and he's gonna give us some progress update on the Lotso Project L zero four four dad zero zero one.
Good evening, I'm just gonna try to get this presentation that you have printed in front of you up on the, up on the screen here.
I did say, Patagansia roadside walk and road improvements, probably makes more sense.
Should be good. Can you hit the, I think it's a button on there I have to press. Okay, let's see here. There we go, just click share. It's loading. All right. Okay, so, good evening, for the record, Alex Close, Deputy Public Works Director and Acting Town Engineer for Town of Eastline. I hope you're all doing well this evening. So, I wanted to give this presentation as kind of a final update. The only remaining item we have before we submit these plans to the Department of Transportation Headquarters for final review of our bid package is the District Two DOT's review of the signal work at Route one sixty-one. So, once we get any encroachment comments back from them, we'll be submitting this plan, but at this point, I think I've addressed individually, in most cases, any residents' comments over the past, you know, year or so, since we've been working on this project, incorporated many comments of about twenty or so residents that, whose properties may be impacted. Very few of them, we would need a permanent sidewalk easement, most are just construction disturbances. About half of them, at this point, I've spoken with or met on their property, and I even have some of the easement language already secured with them, so I don't anticipate any kind of right-of-way takings or anything like that, and everybody so far has been very amiable and supportive of the project. The few comments or concerns that I've had, I think we've addressed at this point. I would hope that any residents that have had, you know, had the opportunity to speak to me have come and done that, or spoken to, you know, the first selectmen of the board at this point. So, we feel that between the Plan of Conservation and Development, all the way back in two thousand and twenty, through this local transportation capital improvement program funding process at this point, that we've given adequate kind of public awareness and public notice through multiple presentations, the P O C D process, as well as sending letters out directly to abutters. So, with that, I kind of wanted to give a final update, as I anticipate, from this point forward, it would be submitting the package, getting approval, and going out to bid to do the construction next year. So, what the final, you know, design looks like, if you will, I've got this kind of colored packet in front of you, and what I'm gonna do is just walk you through what, you know, between my department here, as well as the residents' feedback, and what we've come up with. So, starting at, to orient you here, this is the intersection of East Patagansett Road and Route one sixty-one, where there's an existing crossing that actually does have a push button there that's tied into the signal, but it's not, it's not adequate for, you know, modern signalization, and it's not adequate to do a crossing timed on East Pat. So, that would be a brand-new loop detection system. I've looked at doing whether they want to do, whether the DOT wants to do a camera system or a loop, because this signal is actually tied with the Roxbury Road signal, we're gonna stay with the loop system. So, I've got a signal design done for that. Again, I'm just waiting for the district's approval for the signal design, but this would be, this crossing of East Pat and the crossing on one sixty-one would have new pedestrian push buttons, that would be ADA compliant, and timed into the signal, so you'd be able to push the button and have the signal go red and be able to cross the street, not a side street green or anything like that, it would actually be a full clearance so that people could make their way across. That island that you all are probably familiar with, that's kind of just that paved island there, I would look at doing a pedestrian refuge point there. I think that we have the opportunity here, since we're doing a full reclamation of the road, to tear that out. I would propose probably some granite and bricks, with maybe a small landscaping area to kind of match the rest of the downtown Niantic corridor that's sort of been making its way slowly up, even to include the I ninety-five project that's going on all the way up as north as the Stop and Shop. I just think that that would give sort of that aesthetic to the area while maintaining that island. Just so you're aware, we did look at doing two separate turn lanes, dedicated left, straight, and a dedicated right lane. I worked with the traffic engineer, did the signal design for that, and we felt that, based on the volume of traffic, that was not really warranted in any way, so the cost to make those upgrades and get that approved through the DOT didn't make sense. The, the, the most, the majority of drivers here are either taking the right that they're able to in the, in the radius that's there, or a lot of them are taking a left turn and waiting for the signal. So, there was no need to split it into two separate lanes. So, those are all some of the things that we looked at, in particular to this intersection, which is all of the stuff that has interface with the Department of Transportation and will require encroachment approval from them. So, before I kind of make my way southerly through the rest of the project, were there any questions, comments, or concerns you had at, like, what the intersection of East Patagansett and Route one sixty-one would, would look like?
I would like to ask, so when you're at that point, there's the old pedestrian island, it's rather, it's not triangular shaped, but it's not square either. So, would the shape of that change so that it would be a little bit wider, because it's pretty scary to stand on that spot and have cars, you know, anxiously waiting for you to step out?
Yeah, sure. So, the, I'll say, the first thing would be that the timing would be such that the intent would be for you to cross all the way, right? It's not, it's not that you would be in a situation where you have to wait in the middle. The idea would, it would be time for you to go all the way across. It's just kind of providing an area where if something were to happen, or someone felt uncomfortable, they could wait momentarily there. The exact width, I don't have in front of me, but, you know, it would be, I would say, but looking at it, probably at least ten feet. It's the, at the, it's at the, it would be sort of the similar shape of the island that's there, but it's at the part closest to one sixty-one. So, again, this would be for like an individual pedestrian that, for some reason, had some sort of problem while they were crossing, provides him an opportunity to have that spot of refuge, but the intent is not to, not like you would in like a downtown city where you have to have a bunch of people like bunched up and waiting in that middle space. It's not like a multi-lane, you know, pass or anything like that. So, I think the space that would be there should be adequate for, you know, a couple of people to, to be able to wait there, if for some reason that was needed. Ultimately, it's just that, instead of pushing the pedestrian out closer to one sixty-one and shortening the island, rather keep them away from that intersection while they're doing the crossing, and so we had to make some sort of a cut-through, so that's just sort of the standard design for that. Okay, so, if, say you were to be at, you know, one sixty-one, which the sidewalks run all the way down to, you know, along Route one sixty-one, they go down to downtown, you'd be able to cross at a now-functional crosswalk and ramp system until you're made your way to the west side of East Patagansett, and at that point, we would continue on. The sidewalk varies between the monolithic five-and-a-half-foot-wide sidewalk and a standard five-foot-wide with a three-foot snow shelf, depending on a multitude of factors, predominantly utility conflicts, property conflicts, and steep grades. So, the area to the northernmost point of the road, as you come off of one sixty-one, it can be, you know, quite steep, and so in a lot of those places, we kept the sidewalk as close to the road as possible, just to minimize the amount of grading onto people's properties. But where feasible, we've taken the road and pulled it back and provided a shelf, which would be a grass distance between the, you know, standard curb, a space of grass, and then a five-foot sidewalk. Yes?
Alex, on the graph, these red lines, can you cue us into what those mean?
Yep. So, those red lines are just showing the places where we anticipate an impact to somebody's property, and those are the individual homeowners I've reached out to, which I've heard back from about ten out of the twenty individual property owners.
So, every time we see that, that's...
That's an area that would be impacted, and once the construction, as part of the construction, everything would be restored to original, or actually, new condition. So, for example, you know, you see number one fourteen here, the reason you see all this red is because it's extremely steep, so we would have to chase this driveway in grades in order to put the sidewalk there and pitch it so that the sidewalk is draining into the roadway, because we wouldn't want to send more sidewalk, you know, rainwater. Basically, in order to construct this, and as of right now, they probably only have a couple of feet before their driveway drops off very quickly, and again, we would want at least that five feet. So, we don't want to make their driveway or lawn any steeper than it is, especially their driveway any steeper than it is today, so we have to go down and actually repave a pretty significant portion of this individual homeowner's driveway, in this case, that you see a lot of that red. And that's what that's kind of indicating, is an impact, an expected limit of disturbance, so I can communicate to them, hey, this area is gonna be disturbed, when we're done, you're gonna get new pavement and new, new loam and seed and lawn established after the sidewalk is built.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, that's a great question. Thank you for bringing that up. So, we would continue on, on the west side, there's a match line here, so I'm just bringing it over. As you continue to move your way south, you know, there's, there's, again, some areas where it has to go between the, again, the monolithic, which means right up against the road, but we would provide an extra six inches of concrete width there, so the, so the concrete itself would actually act as the curb in this case, but it would be a little bit wider. And then where it's not, we would have a, an asphalt, you know, bituminous curb, and then the, the grass strip. So, just to avoid, you know, fire hydrants and utility poles and all the grading requirements that go into this process, because moving utility poles is extremely difficult and takes a very long time. So, you know, we try to avoid those, there's only one that we have to move. Looking at coordinating different mailbox locations and things like that, ultimately, that's gonna be up to the post office, but just looking at how we're gonna work around that, to make sure that ultimately, every point on the sidewalk, I know I said it's five-and-a-half or five feet, but at every point, right, so say there's a fire hydrant or mailbox or utility pole, we're providing at least four feet clear. That is the standard for clearance on the sidewalk now in the pedestrian right-of-way, is four feet. So, there may be instances where, you know, we're pouring up against a fire hydrant and the sidewalk is five feet wide, and then past the fire hydrant, it may go down to just four feet, just for that small amount of, you know, space, and then go back up to, to five feet. And that's very, you know, standard practice. So, it would continue all the way until Bush Hill, which is a stop, an all-way controlled stop. At that point, we would have a cross, new crosswalk striping in front of the stop sign, standard practice, where someone could travel south on Bush Hill to cross Bush Hill, and then they could... they could travel from west to east on East Patagonia and switch over to the other side. This was based on a lot of resident feedback, as well as grading constraints, and as well as, you know, keeping a majority of the infrastructure on part of the roadway that we have a little more flexibility with in terms of the lawn space that's there and the proximity of people's houses to the roadway. And so, once it crosses the road there, we would basically continue on the now east side of the road. The other benefit to this too is, you know, some of these residents, the sidewalk's not on both sides of the street. We don't have the width or the infrastructure for that. So, you know, the other benefit to making a crossing at a intersection, like Bush Hill, for example, and making it, you know, crossing in both directions is, gives more people an opportunity, if they live on the opposite side of the sidewalk, to actually go to a point where they can cross that stop-controlled, you know, if they don't feel, you know, necessarily confident in crossing in the middle of the roadway. And that's, you know, that's the maximum extent feasible that we can do to kind of make things, you know, make things, you know, kind of fair for all the residents and able for all users, is to kind of sparse that out where it makes sense and where there's appropriate site distance. Where we haven't always stopped, there's already a stop sign there. So, cars have to stop, and then they would see the pedestrian. The reason I bring that up is because we, one of the biggest challenges and the reason that we did not originally consider the sidewalk on both sides was because of Lakeview, which I'll get to in a minute here. So, as we continue on the east side of the sidewalk, we come around this kind of notorious curve at Brook Road, and, you know, we've gotten a lot of anecdotal conversations with the residents in this area about people coming around this curve, people driving too quickly. So, as part of the pavement reclamation process, which again, all of the pavement is going to get ground up and repaved, so we're going to get a brand-new 20-year lifespan road out of this. As part of the project, it's actually not just the sidewalk. There's going to be some road dieting and road realignment to, in an effort to slow vehicles down to the posted speed limit. We're also looking at these tick marks that you see around the curve are sort of a new, relatively new traffic calming device. It's made to reduce the lane width that we've already, we're already planning on reducing to 11 feet. The tick marks would actually reduce it to feel more like a 10-foot or even 9-foot lane around a curve, which alerts the driver that there is a curve, but it also makes them feel like, even though the lane is not physically smaller, it feels smaller, and so you naturally want to slow down is kind of the idea behind that. There's also a slight shift to increase the radius here as well in order to accommodate the sidewalk. But that should, you know, ideally, that'll slow people down around this curve, as well as allow for the construction of the sidewalk. And so, one of the things we were looking at was, well, where do we cross people back? And that's why we had it on the west side. As much as I'd like to cross it at Brook, we just don't feel like the site distance is adequate for pedestrian users, especially around the curve. So, what that means is, we're actually proposing the crossing back to the west side over at Lakeview Drive. This number 53, and this is not the correct homeowner's name at this point, this is just, that's why it's now or formerly, this is an older map. I have spoken with the resident here. They are by far going to be the most impacted out of any resident along the roadway, and we're, there's quite a bit of a challenge here, but we feel confident that this crossing should be here at Lakeview Drive in order to bring the sidewalk back to the west side, which is where it needs to be in order to get it around the cemetery, which I'll talk about in a minute. And that's why it's really important that we do bring it back to the other side, as well as providing a crossing in an area where, at this intersection of Lakeview, although it's not a stop-controlled, and that's why we're recommending the yield markers, there's a very significant site distance for a pedestrian to be able to look both ways and see very clearly, unlike at Brook Road. And so, we feel that, you know, someone will have adequate decision-making time here to do the crossing. What this is going to entail, however, is this resident has a wall right on their property line, as well as a utility pole. I believe it's a Frontier Pole, right at the corner of Lakeview. So, I've already spoken with this homeowner about having to pull back, and they're going to lose some of their front yard, because we'll have to reconstruct that wall back, and the sidewalk will encroach on their property. And then I've also got to coordinate with Frontier in order to move this pole back to put an ADA curb ramp here at Lakeview Drive at the intersection. But again, the homeowner was very amiable to this. We met out on-site, showed him exactly where his property line is. We went through this whole process and what that's going to look like. And, you know, they're willing to give us that easement, and we're going to coordinate that piece of the project. So, that was one of the big challenges that, you know, it's going to cost a little bit more and taking a little bit more effort, but I think is warranted based on all the feedback that we received, and will ultimately provide a better, you know, scenario for crossing. So, that's the crossing back from Lakeview to the west side, and from that point, it'll actually carry through where there is existing sidewalk today. All of the existing sidewalk today will, however, be reconstructed to modern standards. There's a lot of situations where the sidewalk dips down for people's driveways. We want more of a gradual grade down to be ADA compliant, as well as widening. A lot of the sidewalk out there is, you know, three or four feet wide. We want to bring it to that five-and-a-half or five-foot wide. The one exception to that, as I move on to the last sheet of that width, is actually the cemetery, because we can't move the cemetery wall. So, I do have about a 200-foot section along the cemetery wall where I'm shifting the roadway slightly in order to accommodate a four-foot width. The pedestrian rights-of-way access guidelines say to go to a four-foot width for no more than 200 feet without a bypass space. And we can, we feel that we can keep the four-foot width of sidewalk along the cemetery wall under 200 feet. So, we won't need to provide any sort of bypass, and importantly, we won't be encroaching, we won't be disturbing the cemetery wall or anything beyond the cemetery wall in this case. We're actually moving the road over so that way we're not running into any kind of issues. The site has already been through, this corridor's been through the state's archaeological review process, as well as the state's natural diversity and database process, both of which have yielded no expected issues with archaeological sites or endangered species. So, that's also been completed for this project as well. And then finally, we get to, again, where there is already sidewalk today, but improving the crossing at Hope Street, which is an all-way stop. Right now, there is a crossing there. It's not as robust as we'd like it to be, and it's also a crossing at an angle, which is, you know, not really recommended. Recommended to cross at 90 degrees so that the pedestrian has the shortest distance of travel across the roadway. So, it'd be look at realigning the intersection at Hope Street in East Pat, and then carrying the sidewalk on both sides, because there's already sidewalk on both sides today. And then not having to conduct any modifications in Route 156, because the DOT's already done an upgrade, I believe it was 2018, but it's recent enough that there's already a push-button controlled pedestrian crossing and ramps at the intersection of 156. So, that's outside of the work limits we would tie in beyond there. And that's what this project would look like, along with edge line striping, all the new crosswalk striping, some of the other traffic calming measures we discussed, some roadway realignment, you know, new, brand-new pavement. You know, there's going to be quite a bit that goes into it. The last piece that I'll say is what I'm recommending, and we're going to put out in our contract, is that this project is done in no more than four phased areas at a time. That way, although traffic will be open to one-way alternating, you know, controlled by, with traffic control, so, because the way that a pavement reclamation works is, you're grinding up the pavement into the base material. The town has done this for several roads already successfully. You're grinding up the road into the material and then rolling it, so you can drive on it afterwards. And so, we will be able to have one-way alternating maintained. However, if we keep the construction kind of in zones, a lot of residents will know naturally, oh, if they're working south of Lakeview Drive, for example, I'm just, I'm going to go north today, right? Or vice versa. If they're working north, and I'm coming out of Lakeview Drive or Hope Street or what have you, I know I'm going to go left today. And that should help kind of keep the traffic pattern down. And then, you know, the idea that generally people use East Patagonia as a cut-through for issues with 161 and 156, not going to be the ideal scenario, right? You're going to have to stay on the state roads like is intended for most, you know, drive-through travelers. I mean, this road receives, when we made the application, 5,500 cars of annual daily traffic. You know, it is one of our few minor collector local roads that we have in town that is, you know, sees a volume of traffic like that as pretty substantial. And that's one of the reasons that we were competitive and got this grant in the first place. So, you know, we're going to do what we can to keep traffic off the roadway, and for those users that can't avoid that, make it as navigable as possible, so people aren't, you know, getting interrupted. But I think it'd be well worth it, you know, looking to do this in one construction season, thinking six months is a reasonable timeframe, but dependent on final review from the DOT, you know, looking to get this out to bid this winter and, you know, start in the spring timeframe would be the ideal scenario. Once this is done, I'll put a project webpage up on our website, and I'll kind of maintain information through there. It's sort of my proposed primary form of communication, unless it's something that affects an individual resident, which I'll reach out to them, you know, directly. And this is going to be a full-fledged bid to, you know, a fairly reasonable-sized contractor that's going to be doing GC-ing it. And there's a contingent for construction administration in the grant as well, so we can get inspectors and do construction admin to administer this, which is really good, because right now, me and my staff are like, we have a lot coming up for next year. But because there's a contingent for construction administration, and we can hire a firm to help us with that, I would, you know, kind of be just the customer's representative, if you will, and I'll have some outside help managing this project in particular. Are there any other kind of questions on this?
Just one quick question.
Sure.
I just want to confirm that this is all covered by the state grant, the Joseph Grant?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep. There was a small, I just wanted, there was a small portion of, the engineering is out of our staff time. Had some geotechnical work that we had to do, and then the traffic design, which were paid for. Those are not reimbursable, but once the bid package is done, and we go out to bid from that point forward, including the administration, it is all covered under the grant. So, everything leading up to this, you know, we're not going to get any money back for it, but it will all, yeah, the town doesn't have to put up any sort of a match to these funds beyond all the effort that we put into prepare the package.
Great. Thank you. So, I'd like to follow up on that. So, the grant money will be available to pay at the time that each component of this project is done.
I believe so. I want to 100% confirm your answer. I want to confirm with Kevin Drew Bay. But it's a commitment to fund that we've already received for an allotted amount, and I think during the final review and bid process, as long as we are within 20% of that commitment, and if we're outside, then there's a process to remedy that, that money has already been allocated with that commitment. So, I believe it is a direct through the state, and it doesn't, I know exactly where you're getting at. Do we pay it and then get reimbursed? I don't, I do not believe so with this grant, and we can confirm that. But I think it's, the commitment is already there. So, they've already received funds from Federal Highway, and now the state and the COG are just distributing those funds.
Two questions, Alex. On Lakeview, where it gets tight, you're borrowing some property. That's fine with the owner now, but one day when he goes to sell, will that be an easement?
It'll be an easement. Yep. We're working on the formal easement language.
So, it won't be a buy, buy the town and the property and give it the money to...
Correct. It would be an easement that'll run with the deed. Yep. We do, I mean, we do, I've done, we've done other sidewalk easements that we've had to do, drainage easements as well, and they'll run with the, in perpetuity of the property. It's pretty common for these kind of infrastructures. What's that?
Trash day.
Yeah. A trash day is going to be a challenge, but again, we'll have one-way alternating open, so the vehicles will be able to get through the work site. So, you know, we'll work around being able to do collections.
Talk it after it's finished, as far as trash cans are going on the sidewalks, right?
I think they, yeah, they can be posted on the sidewalk, or I have to see what they do today on East Pat. It's a good question, if they just put them on the grass or not, because the road is not going to get, you know, any wider.
Right.
But, you know, we have the ability to pick off of a curb as well. And so, you know, that's, that's a temporary obstruction. So, if there's a trash can on the sidewalk, that's not, you know, it's, that's not a problem.
Okay.
So, I'd like to ask some questions just about the impact on my, in some schools, my, in some schools right on that corner, bus flow, that type of thing. Have we looked at that, or what the impact is going to be?
Well, hopefully, the majority of the construction will be during the summer.
Same time?
Yeah, that's the ideal, when school is in session, you know, towards the tail end of the project or the spring. I mean, we can work around limiting work hours. The, my concern with that becomes, it's going to extend the overall project. So, better to kind of let them get done what they need to get done within reason, you know, not working at 2:00 in the morning or anything crazy like that. We've got residents. But letting them work to the maximum extent, you know, during the daylight hours, it's going to shorten the overall time of the project. But if there's a, if there's kind of a critical path there in either the spring or the fall, we can kind of address that, you know, when that comes up.
I had a question. You had mentioned in the contract language about no more than four phases of road construction. Did I get that right, or?
Yes. Phase, I should say, areas is kind of my goal.
Yeah.
So, it's, I think it's 156 to Hope, Hope to Lakeview, Lakeview to Bush Hill and Bush Hill to 161. As much as possible, keeping the work limits contained within those sections, reclaiming one section, then picking up your, because they can't, they can't have a trail for the entire length of one-way traffic, right? It's not feasible. So, working in that one section, doing the work that needs to be done with one-way alternating, picking that traffic pattern up, moving to the next section, re-establishing it, picking that up and moving it. Not necessarily that all of the reclaim and the pave and the sidewalk are going to be done section by section, just that the traffic pattern are maintained in those general chunks, because I think that'll give road users the best idea that, again, if I'm coming out of Hope Street and I have the choice to take a left or a right, and to my left I see cop cars and traffic control and construction, to my right I see nothing, I'm going to go to the right. Is what a lot of, unless I can't do that, you know, is what a lot of motorists will think. And so, it just will help kind of limit the flow through the work zone. Think if we keep it in those general sections is my intent.
So, similar theory is what they did between Stop and Shop and Landers Four Corners.
Correct.
Redoing that road. It wasn't sections and sizable chunks. Get that done and then move on, so you can control the traffic.
That's the idea. Yes, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
It's a balance between finishing it as quickly as possible, because ultimately, that's the least disturbance to people, but also recognizing that while the work's going on, we have to maintain some sort of traffic flow and reasonable work hours, et cetera, you know.
That's a great project. Yeah, really much keep in mind. I know you worked very, very hard on this.
Sure.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you. So, like I said, and hopefully, the next time you hear from me will be when we're looking at signing a contract. I mean, I can still give updates in terms of, you know, progress updates about, you know, what the DOT has to say and when we put the documents out to bid, et cetera, et cetera. But I don't plan on coming back for any sort of presentations. This is going to be, you know, the, kind of the final design, unless there's some extrenuating item from DOT, and then they would be directing us to change for some reason.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, yeah, you've done a wonderful job covering all the, all the details and finding out, you know, to the inch, how much concrete will be poured and where it will be poured, and that's wonderful. But just taking kind of a step back, the big picture here is, there is going to be some disturbance. The attempt is going to be made to balance. I like that you used balance, because this is a moment where government is going I like that you used balance, um, because this is a moment where government is going to impact the lives of people and, and their property. And that has to be taken, you know, into careful consideration. But I think you've made the case, a compelling case, that this will make our town safer, more drivable. And we're gonna create a road that really tells drivers the speed that they should be traveling. And I think it's, it's wonderful. Um, so I'm behind it a hundred percent. I do have a few questions, though. You seem to have like an air of finality with this. However, you've spoken to only about half of the homeowners whose properties are going to be impacted. Is there a process for incorporating new feedback at this point? Or is this, um, they've had their opportunity and that window is closed?
There's a, there's a limited process, um, because once we set the documents out to bid, and that's what the contractor bids on, if we change it from that point on, it's a, it's a change order. Um, which we're not really gonna have a ton. There is, you know, gonna be a contingency involved, but we're not gonna have a ton of flexibility with that. And I'd like to back up on two points. When I say that homeowners I've spoken to, these are the people that we directly expect to have some sort of impact on their property. We've been working through this project. I think when we originally started, it was the previous Board of Selectment and the previous first selectman, when we first, uh, had to get authorization from the board to even apply for the grant. And we've had meetings since then. And importantly, this is very important, that, uh, one of the, one of the only, one of the reasons we got funding is because this project was already identified in the Plan of Conservation and Development. So this is not, uh, Engineering Department and Public Works just saying, ah, yeah, we want a sidewalk on East Path, that's a great idea. I think we probably all thinking that's a great idea. But more importantly, the Planning Commission has already garnered public feedback and put this document together in twenty-twenty that talks about all of these really important projects that the town wants to see. And they've gotten the public input from them. That includes the EV chargers and the sidewalks and all of these other, there are other sidewalks that have been identified, like the ones on Boston Post Road, et cetera. Um, so between that initial process saying, yes, the town, Planning Commission and all the feedback wants a sidewalk here, w- w- we're like, we're just figuring out how to make that happen and how the town can ideally not pay for it cause we're gonna get this awesome grant. Um, so there's kinda been a multitude of, um, chances, I guess you will. And of course, homeowners have changed over time. For people to have that, that kind of input, I just wanna make sure that that's clear for everybody and, and just an understanding of the process. Cause I don't want it to be like, oh, this guy Alex said we have to do a sidewalk on East Path. Nope, nope. I'm just, we, the town said they wanted a sidewalk, we're figuring out how to get one there, that type of thing. Um, but I feel like from everybody that we've spoken to, um, many of the people that have reached out to me are not being directly impacted. Some of them live in the surrounding neighborhoods, like the Bush Hill neighborhood. Some of them might or may not get a sidewalk in front of their home. Um, and it may not impact their property at all, or maybe on the other side of the street. And we've still received only positive, um, feedback. So those half or so that I've spoken with, those are people that I actually need like a documentation from. Um, and I'll have all that documentation in place before we, you know, final, um, final go out. You know, cause the contractor's not gonna work if he doesn't have permission to work on somebody's property. Yeah.
Okay. And one other thing that came up, um, Castello's has a lovely little outdoor dining area. Has there been any discussion with them how that would, would be impacted as well?
Yeah, one of the items of feedback I met with the owner was, um, when we do the crossing at Hope Street, uh, securing an easement, which I already have from the owner. Um, has already come in and signed in order to do a ramp and a landing. Rather than, so we've changed the type of ramp at that corner intersection so that there is a potential for a future sidewalk connection on the other side of Hope Street. It's not part of this project to do the extension. I made it very clear that that may or may not happen in the future. There's a lot that it'd be a totally separate, you know, process. But we are at least going to do this, uh, the ramp here at the, at the, um, southeasterly corner of the Castello's property will be constructed in such a manner that if we wanted to do an extension off of it in the future, we wouldn't have to redo, you know, tear out and reconstruct the ramp. That was sort of our, our, our middle round there.
And that sounds like that.
And we have the permission to do that.
For the foot traffic for increased business.
Sure, yeah, yep.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Alex? Thank you, Alex. Very, very thorough and wonderful job. Very appreciative.
Yep, kinda looking forward to wrapping this one up. Hopefully we get good, uh, feedback from District Two and then, you know, we'll finish it up.
You gotta have, you gotta be bored.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know about that. I got some other good stuff coming, but, all right, thank you very much.
Uh, thank you. Okay, now the unawaited, uh, discussion and possible action on building fees ordinance. Maybe we can get this started.
Okay.
Do I hear a motion?
Move that the Board of Selectment approve and enact the amendment so the Town of East Lime and one hundred, one five zero point one five, fees for building and demolition permits, subsection A of the Town of East Lime Building Ordinances, as presented at the public hearings before the Board of Selectment on September seventeen, twenty twenty-five. And that the effective date of the ordinance shall be ten days after newspaper publication of the notice of its adoption as provided by the Town's Charter.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, we've talked about this a lot. This is just a correction to what we already did before because of public hearing. Any further questions or discussion? If not, uh, so the seconded, uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, any, any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Now that's been cleared, so that's great. Um, new business appointment to the Pension Board, uh, as a result of resignation, Paul Lavanti Senior. Uh, we don't have anyone to suggest tonight, but we are hoping that we'll get, um, suggestions of some of the, uh, might be appropriate for the Pension Board. It's a little bit technical, so, um, we're working on appropriate person to take that, uh, position. So we'll just table that. Uh, I don't, is, I'd say we have presentation by Anna Perch, uh, the Brookside Farm Museum. I don't see her here, so we'll just mark that off or reschedule that? Pardon me?
She didn't call to say she wasn't.
Okay, well, then we'll just, uh, schedule another time if she's available. Finally, on new business discussion of Paul Loria to the Town of East Lime. So we suggested that it might be, uh, nice thing to have a Paul Loria to the Town of East Lime. And Jason, you, did you wanna speak on that? I knew you had some interest in that.
Um, sure, well, excuse me. East Lime is a, uh, a community that cares deeply about learning and teaching, obviously with our, our schools. Um, we're a very literate community, um, at a time when online retailers are gobbling up little bookstores. We have not one, not two, but three very successful bookstores in town. Um, that is a testament to Randy White and his crew. Uh, I just came from a book launch and I know Candace did too, right around the corner that was sold out. It was, you know, a local author's first book. So there is a, a tremendous, uh, literary community here. And I think that, um, they would benefit and we all would benefit by having a sort of official kind of representative from that culture to represent that culture. I see a, a poet laureate as being like a representative who would show up at schools or libraries whenever there's a, you know, an official occasion that has to do with the written word. And I imagine that they would share poems or prose or, or work fitting to that occasion. Um, and I, I think it's an investment in a really important part of our community that costs nothing, but it means everything to the folks in that community and, and will help kind of, you know, bring more attention to the, to just rich culture of letters we have in this town. And, uh, as I understand, there's already been a poet laureate position created. So this wouldn't be brand new. It would be more like resuscitation or digging it out of the grave, I guess, I don't know.
I don't know when this was discontinued, but we did have a position and I think it just kinda faded off the horizon. So this might not, I didn't, I didn't think to, um, look back in any of the records. But I think that if you wanna do it, you just have to do from scratch rather than trying to research and find whatever happened to the position when it was discontinued.
May I just ask, who, uh, when's the last time it's been filled? Like, when you say it's gone dormant, when has it gone dormant? I've been here twenty-five years, I can remember.
I don't know, I have, I think we have a damn town historian, I, but I remember that we, I ca- I can't remember. We, I think we had had two people that filled in that position, but it's just, you know, I can't remember.
So it's not a, it's not a paid position?
No.
It's a, uh, elected position, is that what it is?
No, it's a titled position.
It's a title position, okay.
It's creation.
It's great.
Did the high school have a poet laureate, uh, back in the day?
Mm-hmm.
They did, yeah.
I think you may could probably check with the, uh, library that they would probably know and have the history. They seem to have, you know, big amount of history.
Either that or, either that or county, um, or county historian.
So.
I just wanna say I do like the idea. I'd like to have some more discussion on it and maybe kind of see what it would actually look like and I, I like it, yeah.
So I think it might, it might be wise if we can do a little bit of research.
Yeah.
Uh, before the next time we, we take it up and maybe understand as supportive what the history was and if there was somebody from the past, uh, kind of who that was on, it might be interesting. And then to, uh, if we decide that we are, we do wanna appoint a poet laureate, I guess we would have to agree on a process. Would we ask for volunteers that would like to be in that role? And then we would draw from those volunteers and we would, maybe they could come in and speak with us so that we make a, have a discussion. I, I, um, do you think it would work?
Yeah.
Something like that.
Yeah. Uh, I can talk to the library.
Yeah.
I'm on the, uh, the ex officio for the library board, so I can talk to them over there.
I think it's a nice, I think it's a nice idea.
And you write comments to the story. We don't have a, we don't have a poet laureate.
We don't have one now.
Yeah, we fall under the guise of the State of Connecticut's poet laureate. Just looked it up.
Oh, okay. But we can have our own, right? We don't, uh, so we, we could use the State of Connecticut's if we needed a poet laureate, but we can appoint our own, it looks like, so. Yeah, let's get to history. Let's find out how it was done in the past and then we'll, we'll set up a little process here to do it right. How's that?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Alrighty, um, so we'll put that over for a couple of meetings and see what, where we get. Um, ex officio reports. What do we have? Roseanne, anything?
Not tonight.
Okay, Jason?
I'll pass also.
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay, Candace?
I have nothing tonight.
No?
Nothing now, but I think after my well school meeting Thursday with Mr. Plaskowski, I think I'll have something that, that night, oh.
Um, you know, not to state the obvious, um, attended the police commission, we have a new police chief. So, uh, I don't think that's an understanding, but, uh, and we're very thrilled about that.
Dan, may I ask a question just about when we had delegations and the board, Ed was here and was asking about that position? Is that something that we can add to the agenda for the next meeting? I mean, it sounds like it's, I would say imperative to, to fill it as soon as possible, right? They were looking at Friday, right? And I mean, I, I don't know how that works, right? I would like to at least talk about it. I know it's not on the agenda tonight, but how, how would you like to approach that?
So, yeah, so, so I was aware of their re- uh, requests. You know, I thought as a courtesy to the new chief of police, uh, you know, it's a staffing issue. So, um, I think we need to have input from the chief, um, how that might be filled and, you know, how, what are their numbers right now on the police force? So, um, I guess it would be appropriate for me perhaps to have that discussion with the chief of police. And then, uh, you know, I know that there's some urgency, uh, certainly the same. If there's a way, uh, to find someone to fill that role, maybe we could just have a special meeting at some point next week just for that one item. Does that sound like a, an approach?
It, it does. I mean, it, it does raise a, it does raise a significant safety concern.
I agree.
You know, so I'd, I'd like to.
No, it's, it's a concern, I, I, no question. Um, but I think we need to have the input, you know, and, and courtesy to the new chief of police.
Sure.
Uh, we need to, to get input from the chief, so.
How was this funded previously? Was it, what, did we do this come under the police department budget? Or did the board event, uh, budget? One part of that?
I think it's under the, I think, I, I, I'd really hate to have Kevin here to, you know, to answer that. But I believe it's not part of their budget, it's part of the police budget.
I believe it's part of the police budget.
Yeah.
I believe it's part of the police budget.
Yeah, that's what I think.
I'd like to suggest that when you are speaking with the, uh, the new chief, that, uh, Jeff Newton is probably, couldn't be good to have part of that conversation as well. Just so you have everybody at the table.
Yeah, no, I think that makes perfect sense. So, uh, we'll try to set up a meeting, uh, between the, the decision makers here on this. And then, uh, if we get some consensus, then maybe we can schedule a very brief, uh, special meeting to, to deal with it. Next week if, if everybody can go, we can probably do it by some, so. Let me work on that and see what we can do. Um, but yeah, very, very important.
Um, when we were talking about the, uh, police chief's position, wasn't there also discussion that we were short on police officers?
Yes, and that's part of the issue. And have, have, being able to dedicate a police officer to S R.
Coupled with the construction.
What's that?
Coupled with the construction.
Yeah, so there's, that's part of the, that's part of the problem. And that's why we really have to have a discussion with the chief of police just to see what staffing availability they have. Yep, that's definitely part of the, the concern. But hopefully, you know, if we, if we get the chief and the superintendent, myself in the same room, we can maybe, maybe come up with a solution. It, it is very important, I would agree. All right, any more ex officio? Being known that I'll just turn to a brief, uh, Sulcman's report. I would remind everyone that the Oyster Festival is this Saturday, the twentieth. Uh, what time does that begin? Does anyone know?
Uh, it begins at noon time and you can come see me for tickets.
Great, good, good.
We have lots of volunteers and actually, uh, we need more volunteers. So if anybody would like to join me, it'd be great. Friends, family, have to come on, we think, great.
So it starts at twelve and it runs till about what time?
It runs till six o'clock.
Okay, twelve to six on Saturday. Great cause and great, it'd be a nice time.
It'd be a nice time.
Okay. Um, Exit seventy-four, one sixty-one, Overpass. They're going to be closing Exit seventy-four soon. Um, the one that you travel on now when you come from Sabre to, uh, East Lime, that's gonna be shut down permanently. Uh, and if you're driving, you, you can see that there's, uh, the beginnings of the new Exit seventy-four. It's partially constructed, but they can't finish it until they shut down the old one because it's gonna cross over, um, the old Exit seventy-four. So they're gonna shut down the current Exit seventy-four. Uh, they're hopeful that it'll take two weeks to, uh, build. It was like a, right now it's a, a valley. And they're gonna build up between those two areas to, to make the new, uh, Exit seventy-four. So I think it's gonna be about two weeks from the time they shut it down. That's gonna be happening pretty soon. Um, there are also, if you, if you're driving under the bridge, you can see that most of the decking, uh, you know, we saw them put up the new beams on the latest section. The decking is now nearly completed on top of the, those beams. So the next step after the decking is to pour the concrete. Uh, once they make that pour and they put all the, you know, bells and whistles on it, uh, they will then be able to switch the current, uh, lane. Uh, I get confused. Is that Southbound? That's it. That's, yeah, the Southbound Lane, uh, will move over to the new bridge. And then they'll be able to take down the remaining section of the old bridge. So all that's gonna be happening in the next few weeks, so there'll be some changes over there. Um, radio, radio issues, we talked a little bit about that before. Uh, we've established a committee to work on the radio problem. Um, I think it's common knowledge that there were about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars of radios that we had purchased. The new chief of police, he is somewhat of an expert on radio systems and, uh, former police department where he worked, had a similar issue where they had substandard radio communication. And he was, uh, instrumental in bringing them into the, into the new, new century here with. into the new, new century here with radio communications. First thing he did, uh, the day after he was sworn in, he came into my office and he informed me that he had those radios, the Harris radios shipped to the Town of East Line and is sitting in a warehouse. And he also informed me that, um, I perhaps had some bad information. Um, we had been, uh, saying publicly, that our understanding was that there was a software glitch, software problem, so, yeah, we had the hardware, but we couldn't make the radio frequencies work. That wasn't necessarily true. And he thinks that we can use those radios. There is a way, um, to make them usable, potentially, as part of the bridge to get to ultimately the State of Connecticut system. So I imagine those radios are now out of the warehouse and in the public safety complex as we sit here tonight. And he's working that problem, and he has suggested that we hire a consultant. We will discuss that with the, with the, uh, police, uh, or the Radio Commission. And, uh, the, uh, he's suggesting a consultant that they use that was, did a wonderful job for them and helped them, uh, put it all together. There are so many moving parts in the, in the radio communication system. It's really hard for any one person to get their handle on it, unless you are really an expert. And apparently, this person is, so he has suggested that. I'm all for it. When the time comes, I'll bring that in front of the board and we can try to move forward. And you may have seen in the newspaper, uh, last week, Waterford, to get onto the state system, it's six million dollars to get to the State of Connecticut system. That's our goal, to get on the State of Connecticut system, and we're hoping it won't be six million, because their infrastructure's a little different than ours.
Do they help with funding?
What?
Do they help with funding?
Does who help?
The state.
Well, there's a lot of things to explore, but, um, it's, it's.
Does it help there?
Yeah, but, um, their infrastructure's different than ours. We may have towers and things already in place, so let's not put the cart before the horse here. But at any rate, um, that's where we gotta get to at some point. But at least in the interim, these Harris radios that we felt were useless are not useless, and we may be able to use them, uh, in the interim, uh, as an intermediate position. And I found all this out the day after we swear in the new chief, so I'm pretty, I'm pretty impressed.
May I ask, how, how did they get lost? How, how did radios, how did they get lost?
They weren't lost.
They weren't lost?
And they were sitting in a warehouse.
But nobody knew that they were there?
We knew they were there.
Oh.
They were in a warehouse, but no one ever, they thought they were useless, so they just let them sit in a warehouse. New chief, uh, says they're not useless, and so he, he ordered that they be shipped. We've already paid for them.
Shipped from where? Where are they?
Well, right now, they're probably in our public safety.
But where were they?
They were at the vendor that we bought them from, in their warehouse.
So, so we, so we purchased them five years ago and they just sat there? They never, they never made it here?
Yeah, that's it. They're here now, I think.
Wow, okay.
Yep. So that's that, and so I think we're gonna get to where we gotta go. It's gonna take some time, but I think we're on a, this is gonna be a whole new phase of getting, getting this straightened out. Uh, finally, a little aside, uh, last week or last time, I believe I reported that we, uh, put a new engine on the Boston Whaler that we had in the firehouse. And, uh, the, the, just put it, the motor was spun a couple of days ago, a week ago. And today was the first day, you know, you have to break in a new motor, uh, when you get a new motor. And so they were out doing, uh, the break-in, it was the maiden voyage of the Boston Whaler. I was sitting in my office, and I came across a scanner that there's someone was drowning off of Black Point. So, um, I didn't know where they were with that boat, so I jumped in my boat. I started heading out, uh, to Black Point, and by the time I got around the bend and got over there, they were already there with our Boston Whaler, and they had rescued the person. So first I outmaiden voyage, they made a save, so. Hats off to our fire service.
That's awesome.
Yep. So that's, uh, that's my report for the evening.
Good report. It was a good one.
Yeah, I tried. Uh, any communications? I'm, we're, we're public on it. All right, no response. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn in September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting, uh, on the Board of Selectmen at eight fourteen PM.
All right. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Where adjourn?